Hey guys. This is Cheryl, you're all again seeing and I'm the mouth on the mic of hitting the streets podcast show. So today I'm doing something different. I have Councilman Steven here Stevenson here. And this is you are the first one. You are the first one to sit over here in the nice corner, the red corner here to do a show.
Well, I'm honored. You could have picked somebody prettier. Let's do it.
Okay, so really quick guys behind me, I know you guys see a bunch of art and you know, just recently I opened up an art hub. So really quick, this one right here in the middle, I just want to give a shout out to Crystal Skinner. She is part of the hub here. And that piece back there, and this is why I have this extra sheet of paper here. It is called the colonization of color. So yes, you guys need to come by the hub this Saturday, I'm going to be open, but check this out back there while you guys are listening to Josh and I talk. Thank you, Crystal for, I do appreciate you for having your work here. She has more work in here at the hub, so you guys need to come and see us. Alright, that's my bug. So I've got Josh here, who is the city council man for Sherman. And one of the questions I want to ask you is what made you decide to run again? I know it's campaign season, so.
I mean, you know, I used to be one of those guys who wondered like, why do they keep doing it, you know? It takes such a long time to get something done.
Yeah, that's true.
And you're always working on a project, you're trying to meet a goal. And then, you know, you accomplishing your goals and when your term is over, they don't really line up with it. So, um, you know, I've got a couple of projects that I'm still working on and, you know, I figured I've got two terms left. I'll, I'll stay till they throw me out and try to finish these projects because it's, it's been a couple of years in the way.
So you have, you've been in two terms and you've got, how does that work?
I've been in, so we have three year terms. And you can have four. So I've been into my second term, which is year six. And I've got two more terms I could do, so I could do six.
Oh my, you've been in it that long?
Yeah, six years.
Oh my, okay, so my next question is whether you believe the role of the city council is in our community? What's their role? What is y'all's role?
Well, I mean, first off, it is obviously to represent the people that elect you. So in Sherman, everybody in the city gets to vote for every city council position. So you, you know, you have to live, four of us have to live in certain areas of the city. And then two are at large, so you have to live in that area and you represent that area. But since everyone in the city votes for you, you really represent also. So I think the first role is, you know, you, you represent the will of the people and you try to understand in general what people want. So what I do, and it gets complicated, someone asked me the other day, how can you tell what people want?
Okay, that's one of my questions and that's one, I want you to answer that question. What do you, how do you know what people want? And number two, if you are not in my territory, can I still ask you questions about some of the needs or concerns?
Yes, absolutely. Every city council person in the city of Sherman represents everyone in the city of Sherman. So you can do an anti-city councilman, there isn't a my city councilman or your city councilman. Because everybody elects us, everybody gets to vote.
That's right.
So believe me, I represent everybody because you get to go to the ballot box and push my name for nothing. But they wanted city council people that are from all four corners of the city. So that's why it's divided up. You don't want all six city councils to just from one area is then they're less concerned about what happens.
So what do you, how do you know what people want?
Well, uh, you know, I think I start with what people need. And then once we get the needs met, then I start thinking about what they want. But really look, it's, it's really complicated. Anybody who tries to tell you any of this stuff is simple, it is not simple. It is all very complicated and I just try to think if I had 10 minutes to sit down with any person in Sherman, just like I'm talking to you. And explain to them the nuances and the ins and outs of these really complicated issues. I think my vote comes down with what they would tell me in the long run. Cause on the face of it, someone might say, oh, man, I want X and I'll say, okay, well, here are the consequences for X and here are the consequences for not doing X. I think if I could state my case, most of the time, most of the people would agree with me. But, but more than that, uh, my job is to be a fierce and sometimes vicious advocate for the city of Sherman and its residents. So if we're doing a deal, if we're negotiating, uh, my job, as I see it, is just to be a pit bull. And get the best deal that I can possibly get for the city of Sherman.
What, so on that note, these are just questions that have popped up in my head. How does that work? Because I know there has been some incidences that things really need to go to in front of the council members. And also, how often can you, um, can you take it upon yourself to problem solve or solve some of the issues that are here? Can you do it or do every single situation or challenge has to go in front of the council?
Well, I mean, there are certain things that the council has to vote on, right? Red large has to vote on. There are smaller issues that pop up from time to time, fence dispute or, you know, like, hey, the city wrote me a ticket for X and I don't think it's fair. Or, you know, like administratively, the city does something and I have a problem with it. Then people call me, then I'll use, you know, my authority and I'll go back to whatever city management or city administration and I'll say, hey, explain this. You know, uh, the citizen said, you know, hey, they got a ticket, their grass was too high and they got charged a hundred and forty bucks for you to come mow their front yard because your grass is too hot.
A hundred and forty bucks?
Did, did they get a warning? How high was the grass? Well, you know, is this, has it occurred before? Like, give me the history. Cause a hundred and forty bucks is a lot to pay. For the city to cut your grass. Now the city wants it to, uh, you know, they don't want to mow everybody's grass. They don't want you to get in the habit of trying to check for that. But it's, but it's a real thing and it really happened and okay, now I go back to the city and say, hey, I want, I want some explanation for this. Cause this seems a bit excessive, you know, and sometimes they go back and they say, well, Councilman Stevenson, you know, we issued them five warnings. If they needed to cut their grass and, and we did this and we did this and did this and we reached the end of our rope and so then we did it. Okay, well, fair is fair, but sometimes it's like, oh, you know what? Now we didn't, we didn't issue them. We probably should have, our policy says this and, you know, so there, some things can be fixed by your city council person without going to the city council and voting on it. They're sort of like, your problem solver in the city, you know, a resident, you can't have forty four thousand people up there every day banging on the doors. So that's one of the reasons you have a city councilman, you call your city councilman and you say, hey, I've got this problem with this. And then they go and sort of investigate on your behalf. Now that doesn't mean that they always make your problem go away. Lots of times we don't. But we make sure that everybody's playing by the rules.
So tell everybody in the audience, how does it work when it's a public forum? I have attended several city council meetings and, and, and some I understand, some are kind of over my head, I have to admit that. But it, how does it work? You know, especially with public comments? And honestly guys, a lot of this information that I am talking about is on the website. So Josh, just kind of give a quick overview for people that are interested in, in coming and I encourage you guys to come to the council meetings. Kind of, kind of tell them a little, you know, how that works.
So we have, um, certain items. And on those items on the agenda, it's open for public comment. So if we're changing zoning or, uh, some things we're doing ordinance, there is a, a time for the public to get up and say to us, I like this, I don't like that. We allow comments on anything that's on our agenda. Anything that's on our agenda, we allow comments and, and we used to allow comments on just anything across the board, you could get up. But what we ran into was people that would want to get up and bring up things that A, we had no idea what they were talking about. Or B, things that we have absolutely no power to change. What's going on at federal level? What's going on state level? What's going on county?
That's what gets so tricky. I'm not trying to cut you off. Pause. That is one of the most tricky things and I'm, and I'm bringing this up because I have so many people have asked me, even, even it's hard for me to explain. Because you have county inside the city. And a lot of things are tabled to the county and a lot of things are tabled to the city. It, it, it's downtown Sherman is one of, downtown Sherman is one of, you have the court, the county and all this. But then when things come, uh, I don't know, related to this, let's say sidewalk or the road or whatever, it's city. That is a very complicated thing to explain. When you're a business owner and you're calling about one thing and the city goes, oh, that's county. And then you talk to the county and the county is like, oh, that's city. How does that work?
Well, it can get a little complicated, that's true. So the city is a municipality and is a legal entity, has authority inside city limits. Uh, we also have a little, have a little authority outside city limits. In our, uh, extrajudicial territory, um, a little bit of authority. But inside city limits, you have other taxing entities, other government entities like the county. So if the county owns a piece of property, let's just say for instance, the county courthouse. You know, it's sort of like a little embassy of the county inside the city and they own that. And they, you know, same with the ISD. So every single school, the property that the school owns for those schools, well, that's like a little embassy of the schools. And what they say goes inside of that little zone. So it can get really, it's like Swiss cheese.
It, it, it is. And where is our Switzerland? Like who is the person that's going to represent to get over those little instances where you're stuck? In the loop of so and so saying it's this person and this person and you just kind of don't get anything done. So my question, I'm asking that is because if that ever happens to me and I really want something done, how do I break that little loop of say, okay, look, Josh? I've already talked to you, I've already talked to the county, I've already talked to so and so, so and so, it's not working. So who is the next person in line that I need to get to, to make whatever my problem is go away?
So I, I would go first to a city council person. They'll immediately take it to, um, Robbie Hefton, the city manager or assistant city manager and get some clarity. And then, and then the next step is directly to like Bruce Ozier, county judge. I really believe that our elected officials are probably, um, the easiest elected officials to get in touch with.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, text, phone call, email, uh, they will, they, they will respond and, you know, funny enough, uh, every now and then I'll be perusing something on Facebook. And someone will say something on Facebook, like problem or an issue or whatever. And I'll answer it, you know, and be like, oh, what's this or that or whatever, because I know, because I have to sit through all the meetings. And people are like shocked that like, hey, y'all live here, we all have Facebook.
I'll tag him. I'll, I'll, if I see it, I'm like, I'm tagging, I'm tagging him because somebody needs to answer these questions. With a right answer and a sound mind. They're not, they don't really know what's going on or how it's going on in the arguments and I, I seriously have seen the arguments on Facebook and I'm like, I know the person that can shut this down and answer this real quick, tag Josh.
I enjoyed this when I was at Channel 12 and I especially enjoy it now. Is when I go and I read the Facebook and it's just like, I really know the inside scoop. And it's all this stuff and there's like a hundred comments and I'm thinking like, not a single one of these is anywhere close to what the inside scoop is. And it's not dramatic or interesting, like there's no conspiracy. Trust me, nobody's lying in their pockets. It's just like, oh, well, the state legislature, this used to be the old rule. And then, well, they couldn't agree on a new rule, so really there's no rules. Everyone's just sitting around waiting to figure out what the rule is. And that's why nothing's happening. And it's just like, yeah, they did this for sets and shuts and so and so. And I'm like, what are you talking about? It's just like, city council does not choose what restaurants come to damn. We don't get to say.
Hold on, let me run that up. Let me ask, who's courting them? So who court, so who court the businesses that come to Sherman? Isn't it the city?
So again, if it's a, if it's a big industrial employer, Sedco goes and courts them. If it's somebody like a restaurant, our own assistant city manager, Terrence Steele has a program. We're constantly reaching out to restaurants and saying, Sherman's a place you should be. But look, if someone wants to, if we have ninety seven Taco Bells. Let's just say there's, let's say there's ninety nine Taco Bells in Sherman, Texas. And somebody says, hey, I got two million bucks burning a hole in my pocket. And I think the one hundred Taco Bell is going to be the one that makes it in Sherman. It's your money. If you want to buy a piece of land and build a Taco Bell and hire twenty five people. A, we can't tell you no, because that's illegal to tell someone that they can't start a business. They're legally allowed to start with that they want. And B, like, hey, why would I tell you, we don't want your tax dollars, don't try to open a new Taco Bell. If that's what you want to do, it's America, you're free to do any stupid thing that you want with your money.
This one.
So we don't get to choose. And of all of the things that, that, that people get real riled up about, I remember they sit down sort of building another Whataburger out on the highway. People got so mad, like, we don't need another Whataburger. But like, listen, no one came to me and said, Josh, fill out this list of things that you want. And that's what we'll get. It is whoever shows up with their money and says, we're going to build a restaurant here. They file the permits and we get it. If it was up to me, we'd have a roses cafe, alright? And listen, I know those people and I bug them all the time. I'm trying real hard.
I need a Jason's Deli, let me go ahead and put that, do I need a court team?
So we, we do court restaurants, but at the end of the day, uh, restaurants, um, they have their own listed criteria of what they need. Some of them is what's your median household income? Do you have enough money in Sherman to buy our food on the reg?
And that's why we ain't got no HEB.
I mean, that, that goes into it and then how many other restaurants? And like, how often do people in Sherman eat at restaurants? There's a lot of things like, nobody is winging it. On an open or prayer and, and really what we're trying to do to get the things that people want, retail falls rooftops, number one. People aren't going to build retail and, and restaurants until there's rooftops and more people means a better chance. And we're trying to, with Texas Instruments and Global Wafers, raise the median household income in the city. And when that median household income goes up, you know, above sixty thousand dollars, you're going to see a lot of these good restaurants showing up. And that's going to happen with these new employers show up. So it is very much, everything is very much a, a long game. There's not a lot of short game that we do.
So really quick, uh, this question right here, let me, we were talking about the public, uh, forum. Answer this question for me, then we'll move on to this next question. How do people get their concerns on the agenda?
Well, I think the concerns are, is it a matter that's coming before council to decide? Cause that period for people to come and, and talk to us is for them to tell us their opinion on something that's sitting in front of me, I'm about to vote. I'm about to vote on this, I'm about to decide, should we go down this path or this path or say yes or no? And that time is for you to come and say, Councilman Stevenson, Councilman Allen, Councilman Dobbs, all the rest of them. You're about to vote on this about whether or not you're going to put an apartment complex behind my house. And I'm here to tell you, I don't want apartment complexes behind my house for these reasons. It's not safe, the roads aren't wide enough, whatever the reasons are, and to let their voice be heard about that. Our meetings are getting longer and longer and I get people are frustrated about stuff that's going on. But the only people in that room are the seven of us sitting up there and then twenty five city staff members. And then usually unfortunately, like two citizens. So you're talking to us about something, if we're not voting on it, look, those agendas are pages and pages and pages.
I've been there, I've been there late.
Yeah, and if you, if you want to tell me your opinion on something that's going on in the county or whatever, hey, my phone number's public, I'm all ears. But when we're sitting there trying to decide how we're going to vote and all these agenda items and you, we try to come in there legally, you can't, you know, predetermined, I'm going to vote this or that way with an open mind to you here. So I think people want to get up and say their piece. But if you're saying your piece about something that I'm not voting on in that minute, like, I really need to be focused on the really important, like every single meeting, it's like, two or three hundred houses, probably twenty million dollars worth of business. That's taxpayer business every meeting. I think you want city council people focused on.
And that's, and that's true. That's, that's true. But your constituents need to be heard too about their concern and that's, and I think that's part of the thing that we look at. Just me, Josh, being a part of the council, I do understand where you're going, where sometimes you kind of, I get all that. But their voice deserves to be heard with their concerns, just as much as us voting on two hundred houses or whatever that we're doing, that we're there for the, for the meeting.
But if we're there, look, if we're there to talk about something that impacts your life, I want you to come.
Sure, absolutely.
Oh, they're voting on this. They're voting, alright, so right now, just as, for instance, the city Sherman is looking at a tree. Because a lot of people are really concerned with all the new construction going on. We're tearing, these developers are tearing down all these trees and all these old trees. So today I had a two and a half hour meeting with a lot of developers and builders to talk about this tree ordinance. Yeah, the developers and builders are like, boy, it's gonna, it's gonna cost us a lot of money to survey every tree and decide what trees to tear out. Like they have serious concerns about it's their livelihood, you know? But at the same time, I have a ton of citizens that are, you know, we want to make sure that we're just not a barren landscape of empty fields and houses and, you know.
Oh, concrete parks and things like that.
And when it's time for us, like we have a thing going on tonight. Where it is a listening session where all the citizens can go, tell us their thoughts. And we go to vote on it, if fifty people show up and want to talk about trees and how they feel about it, I want to hear from every single one of them. But if you showed up three weeks ago to talk about trees, it's not sitting in front of me. So it is not about silencing any voices. I want every voice heard. But I don't, if you open it up wide open, then A, you're not going to be as effective delivering that message. And B, these meetings are going to be like nine and a half hours long.
And, and let me say this while he's saying that, please look on the, the city website. Because on that website, it's telling you what's on the agenda, so you know if you need to come, um, share your concerns. So seriously guys, it's so important to attend these meetings. I learned so much by being there and at the commissioners, uh, meetings too as well on Tuesdays. It's, it's knowing a lot that's going on in the city, which, which, all the confusion that sometimes we hear or the noise that we hear on Facebook. If you just would attend the meetings, it'll clear it all up. So I, and I'll just say that from my perspective and my experience.
Well, look, and I'm going to, when you just read the agenda items themselves, it is legalese.
It's overwhelming.
It is like, you're like, I read this paragraph three times.
What the hell does that mean?
If you click on that agenda item, it takes it to another page. And in that other page, there's a plain English description, there's maps.
For people like me.
People like me, maps, diagrams, all of the background information, need to understand what this item is. And I can get it, it's very overwhelming at first. But you look, if you're, if you're sitting and, you know, like me, your kids are watching something you don't care about and you're mindlessly scrolling through something. Go look at the agenda and just scroll through, because there's, every single one of those items is about how the city does business or allowing something to change. Or allowing someone to build something. And, you know, I tell people all the time, we'll be talking about projects and they're like, are you giving me some sort of super secret inside information? And I'm like, no, it's all public knowledge. Just, you know, you gotta dig through fifty feet of really boring BS. To get to the good stuff and I want everybody, I think the more informed people are about what's going on. I will never be frustrated if you want to have a conversation with me about a disagreement about something. Man, I, I want to have those conversations. But we have to start from the same playing field and the same level of knowledge and there's nothing that I know, very little that I know, that isn't in that as public agendas. Cause that's where I get my information. Now, sometimes there's a little inside information we have to keep to ourselves. But ninety five percent of it, everyone, and you know, take the time and read up, it's very interesting.
So what do you think is the biggest challenge our town is facing today? Now that we've had, and we've had a learning session with Josh Stevenson, what are the biggest challenges that you think that we're facing? I can name a few, but I'm going to hear from you first.
I mean, A, I think the biggest challenge we're facing in the next ten years, big, big picture, is how do we grow? At the rate that we're growing and still be Sherman, Texas? How do we grow at the rate that we're growing and not become the copy and paste city you see from three eighty all the way to downtown Dallas? How, how do we, how do we grow and retain the personality? And then, and then how do we grow and make sure that the opportunities that this growth brings, um, get spread amongst everybody in the city? That, that, the wealth that's going to be created in the city, the opportunities that are going to be created in the city are distributed where everybody gets a shot at it. Look, what's the point of growing and all this growth and all these jobs, but doesn't make the people who live here's lives better? If you live in Sherman and all this growth and all this opportunity that's coming our way doesn't improve your life one iota, then it's not good for you, you know? And that's, and that's the goal in how do you do it?
And I want you to kick that thought because next week, because we're going to run out of time, next week, I want to have a conversation with you about that, about downtown Sherman. Um, last year, I think it was last year in June, Josh was on and he had discussed with me on, on the mic about a comprehensive plan. To grow and to rejuvenate downtown Sherman and, and, and here we are a little over a year later. And that is coming into play, probably even started, coming in the process. But there are some concerns, um, even with me, with part of the revitalization and the growth. And one of the challenges that I see, and I hear what you're saying ten years from now, but currently, right now presently, Josh, those road closures. I, I understand that it is needed. I understand our highway needs to upgrade. Everything that you were about to tell me that I've heard from every council person going to the meetings, the mayor and coffee business and all that, I do get it. But it is hurting our downtown business interests and it is hurting them to the point where you just said, how do we grow and continue with our livelihood and make it better for us? How does that happen? What do we do as a community to help our mom and pops, small businesses deal and overcome with the road closures that happen? And, and one more thing, they just went through, three years ago, they just went through COVID. And we lost so many businesses here in Texoma area. I'm not just talking about Sherman, Dennison, Texoma area, we lost a lot of business that hurt us. And now we're back facing, not that we're facing a pandemic, but we're facing these growth, growing pains. Let's call them growing pains.
I think that's fair.
With our small businesses. Now, we could talk about this now, we have just a few minutes or we could table this till next week, but here's the thing. I saw on, um, the news about the tax rebate and I, I do want to talk about that so I can have some, a little more clarification about that. But this is something that I think you on the campaign trail, when you get elected or if you get elected or however you want to say it. What are you going to do about that or what are all, all the council members going to do about that? Because I work with several downtown business owners and they're hurting. And I wish, I wish I had enough money to say, you know, whatever I could do to help you, I don't. So what, as a community, what can we do? That, that's a challenge, Josh, that we're facing right now. And when we grow, there's more to come.
Well, first, I think you have to really put a lot of effort in thinking about, not could we do, but what should we?
Fair enough.
Because having a business in downtown, um, downtown is a special place. It is sort of in my mind, the heartbeat of the city.
Yes, it is. It's the heart of the city.
The center of the city. But I don't want, you know, somebody downtown asks me like, well, you know, the government just cut us checks, why don't you cut us checks? Well, you know, that's everyone in Sherman's money. Your competitor who's not downtown, that's their, that's their money too. They might not like that. So, so what should we do and then what's fair? So the current program that we have is a sales tax abatement program. So you pay eight and a quarter percent sales tax, well, the state gets most of that. The part that the city gets, we basically divide it in half and that comes to one hundred. Um, the part that the city gets, we basically divide it in half and that comes to one percent. So everybody in, it's in the downtown business district that qualifies for this program. Gets a one percent sales tax rebate and that's really easy math to do. What was the total amount of stuff you sold? You get one percent of that back, which on the face of it, doesn't seem like much. But when you're talking about businesses that operate on a four percent margin every year or a five percent margin. You just increase their profits that year by twenty percent. Now that you're talking a lot, then the program isn't just for one year, it's for five years. So if you're increasing their margin by twenty percent over five years, that's giving them an entire extra year's profit. For a small business in downtown, that's a big difference. That, I think that will make a, a difference. And that's, that's the initial thing that we're doing. Because fifty six has been shut down, because Kelly Square, that fire at Kelly Square really.
And that's the truth.
That's a lot of foot traffic that they lost, so, so, alright, that's a reinvestment, we're not, we're reinvesting money that they paid us. So we're really giving them a rebate back, so we're not going and putting our hand in anybody else's pocket.
Okay.
The second thing that we're doing is we're investing in a lot of infrastructure downtown. So the sewer is, is up and, up and going and all the engineers have been complete and they're ready to. Start digging holes and when they do, there's gonna be more streets torn up. You gotta break a few eggs to make an omelet, but that's going on. The next thing that we're doing is we have uh another program. Where people who are redeveloping downtown, you'll see a lot of buildings in downtown that have been sitting abandoned for a long time. Go look at them now, they're working on them, they're, they're, they're going back and they're putting new things, there's a, a couple of really good. Builders and developers that are heavily invested in downtown, the city's doing their part to help them do those projects. So making sure they have good infrastructure, making sure people who want to reinvest their money in downtown are, are met with a city. That is willing to extend its hand and meet them halfway to make that happen. Helping the businesses here and the new businesses that come to downtown. You, a new business, you show up in downtown tomorrow, you get a one percent rebate for the next five years. So that's sort of the initial step of what we're doing to get over this hump. Until the seventy five project is done. Look, we had a comprehensive master plan committee put together and we talked about everything under the sun. And we met for six weeks and the two biggest things that came out of that was downtown and our trail system. So the future that we've laid out for Sherman is a thriving downtown, uh. Like a McKinney, maybe not exactly like a McKinney, we still have an operational courthouse down here. Um, but that's a good model, I think. And then a, a really large interconnected trails program. Where it's a nice day on a Saturday, you can jump on your bike and you can ride all day and see all the entire city and be on a trail the entire time. So those are the goals that we're reaching for right now and, you know.
Okay.
You, you have to, A, know where you are and be real honest about where you are. And then just pick a destination, we might never get there, but if you never pick a destination, you're never gonna get anywhere, so.
I want to, I want to bring you back because we're out of time, I want to bring you back because I want to talk about the comprehensive plan. I want to talk about, um, when we, when I was at the council meeting, I saw parking and everything that was going to be upgraded, I used to work with upgraded. The lights being strung in downtown Sherman, I want people to know about what I saw and what you guys, I believe it was Dave, that has put together.
Yeah, and just, just to let people know, because everyone's like, why don't you just do this? Just to put the new, new lights up that we're doing, turns out those old poles downtown, we don't own them. And the people that own them said, no, you're not putting that stuff on our utility poles, so we have to put in our own poles. So we can hang cool signs and lights and all that stuff on it. So everything, when you're dealing with government. It's like ten layers more complicated than you ever thought it was, it's like changing the oil on Subaru or something. It's difficult to complicate it, so.
Well, I appreciate your time and I, and I appreciate you doing this video, so please come back next week, um. I want to talk a little bit more, I still have more questions that I have to ask and, and really talk about the downtown and I do want to talk to you. About art and the art community and the culture because I really see that this is on the horizon. Um, Dennison, and I will say this with you, Dennison has done an excellent job of showing how things work. And I know Sherman is right there, right there with them, but I'd like to hear from you of what you think and what your views are about growing in our community here. Um, I think it's, I personally think it's something that would be great for the economy. Um, the creation of it all, the inclusivity of it all, being diverse, I think that's, I really think that's.
You, you tell me when and I'll be here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright guys, we're out, this is Shell, you're rolling MC, catch another episode on Getting the Street, bye.